It's called the order, it's Tuesday, January 12th. The time was 6:06, we're off to our cell phones, we're putting them on outside. This is the county board, including the whole community, for you lot, highway and county facilities. Rule call please.
Benson?
Here.
Burksen? Betts? Carter? Coert? Esri?
Here.
Holderfield?
Here.
James?
Here.
Jay?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
Kurtz?
Here.
Langenhine?
Here.
Maxwell?
Here.
McGinty?
Here.
Michaels?
Here.
Moser? Nudo? O'Connor?
Here.
Petrie?
Here.
Quizzenberry?
Here.
Richards? Rosales?
Here.
Schrader?
Here.
Wyble?
Here.
Alex?
Here.
Hammond? Hammond? Yes.
Uh, since approval of the events of September 6th, people will arrive. So move to the ballot, so I want to change this question. Do you have our favor?
Aye.
And hold it. And not to press. So this card will go out. Uh, since approval of your agenda and your done. Hold on, I just wait for a second, uh, Mr. Allen. Um, I'd like to use the ordinary annual report to, uh, first thing, uh, first thing on the agenda. I'm just checking, is that what you have, Mr. Allen? I'd like to get out of here.
Sure.
All right, any other changes?
Would that be the quarterly and the annual?
Any of both.
Yes, thank you.
Any of us? Yes, both. Thank you, Mr. Allen.
I'll keep you on, on both.
Okay, all in favor? And opposed? Most in favor. Public participation? Uh, members of the public who wish to speak, please follow the forums above the microphone. We have one tonight so far as Brian Adams.
Good evening. My name is Brian Adams. I live at 410 West Almond Street in Urbana, Illinois. And I just came in tonight, uh, not to discuss anything that's on tonight's agenda, but to just get some sense about the, uh, one of the older buildings here, the east side of town, the old county poor farm. Um, I've done a lot of research on Joseph Royer, the architect, and, um, I've always been amazed about, um, how well that building that he designed has survived. It's pretty much at its 100th anniversary right now. Uh, the process of the design and the building started in 1910, and I believe the, the poor farm, uh, finally opened in 1912, so it's really coming on its 100th anniversary. Um, recently, there was an article published in the Historic Illinois Journal about the poor condition of the Coles County Poor Farm. And again, I'm always amazed about how well preserved our poor farm here is in, in this county. So I, I'm really here just to inquire or just express some thoughts about, um, any potential anniversary celebrations or plans to landmark the building. Um, again, just curious because we're coming up on the 100th anniversary, and, um, I really didn't know what the county, um, has planned for the building. Again, it seems like it's still very well maintained and it still functions for various purposes. So again, uh, that's all I really wanted to come and express those ideas and maybe get some feedback from people.
Uh, Mr. Allen, you don't allow feedback in public participation, but you should talk with that number after we're through. If you're called, hold on, and, okay.
Very well. Thank you.
Any other, uh, members of the public who wish to speak at this time? Do you have any other public participation? The national communications? I have one. Uh, on your desk, you will have a piece of paper that, uh, that's drawn called the Polichney Drawn by Lindsay Wyper. Uh, concerns letters from Warren Jeffs. Most of you have a letter on your desk from Warren Jeffs, who I believe is in South Carolina, which is very strange and I won't speak about. You've probably got some of these letters, uh, like, left in the mail. I have about six more each of you in my office. They would be in the mail by then. So, uh, I just wanted to know about that. But they basically say the same thing, that is, if you don't get, uh, Mr. Jeff out of jail, uh, the world goes to hell, something like that. We're going to the top of the line. Um, you'll have, just like, nasty things, recycling these. If anybody who actually wants to read any one of them, they're going to say the same thing. Thank you very much. Any other, uh, Mr. Chris?
Thank you. Uh, yesterday, I attended a meeting at the Champagne City Council Building. Uh, the intergovernmental agreement jurisdictions of, uh, the Clinton Land Bill that we proposed, uh, last month took its first meeting, and, uh, an executive committee was formed, and its first vote was to send a letter to the E- U- S- P- T- A stating our, uh, opposition and legal challenge to the Clinton Land Bill. Uh, also, Bloomington and Decatur were in attendance, and they're considering joining us in the governmental agreement as well, and we'll, you know, the jurisdictions. But we sat and discussed, uh, from all these jurisdictions, uh, other options, uh, for, uh, the opposition to this land bill. I will update you, uh, as further information is available. Thank you.
Any other, uh? Two more? Uh, if you want, our first item, which is the art hanging column of the report. Who's one ready?
Good evening. My name is Amy Koltzchitsky. I'm the current Rural Transportation Advisory Group Chair. Uh, one of the other hands that I raise is Executive Director of Community Service Center of Northern Champagne County in Rantoul. Uh, the report that I'm presenting to you covers not an entire year, and it's based on the state fiscal year, which ends in, uh, June. So the data on the annual report, you'll be receiving this from February through June of 2011. And I assume you all have copies of this. Uh, the first part covers some definitions as far as how data is calculated in terms of numbers of vehicles, total miles, et cetera. The chart below, right below that, shows you the increase that has grown in the need for transportation and how the program has developed since the inception of February 15th. And by the way, before I go out, um, personally, I want to thank the board, uh, for showing the initiative and meeting the demand, uh, and the need for rural transportation in Champagne County. I've been Director of Community Service Center for going on 23 years, and that need's always been there. It's been back in little pieces here and there. Uh, I've been on various committees, and finally, this one actually may go happen, and usually it'll happen, and I want to thank you for it, and I hope you can continue to support. Um, transit services are basically Monday through Friday, um, 7 to 5 o'clock, um, small fees charged. As you can see, uh, $2 if you're going between Lenoir and Rantoul, uh, $5 if you're going Champagne or Bana. The number of riders, which is on the second page, gives you an idea where the folks are coming from that are writing. And these are unduplicated numbers. The first quarter, which was basically a month and a half, there was 20 riders from Rantoul, two from, from Urbana, three Champagne, and one Lenoir. As you can see, in the fourth quarter, it went five times that amount. So the need was always there, um, and the data shows it very clearly. Any technical questions on the report? Uh, Amy Marchand, the Director of Chris, is here, and so is, uh, Iain Sierra from Regional Planning. If you have any specific questions, um, as far as how the transportation is going, uh, we've never really figured the results. As I said, uh, there's been a lot of folks, uh, a lot of senior citizens, and with the price of gas, people that really can't afford to drive back and forth, uh, that have been, uh, utilizing the service, uh, steadily. Our agency was providing transportation using a minivan and volunteer drivers for a number of years, and we could never even come close to meeting the need. We saw how much of demand that there was, so it's exciting that, that this is finally happening. Before I go on to the quarterly report, are there any questions at this point?
Andrew, I'm not sure what registered rider is.
Amy, registered rider.
Sure, it's a great question. A registered rider is somebody who has still got some basic legislative paperwork with us and is registered in our system, so that when they call, we have all that information to pull up from there, and we can start tracking information about that person.
So, so will we repeat rider?
Yes, sir.
Hi, Mr. Petrie.
Uh, yes. Couple of information questions, but first, again, congratulations on this huge success. It's wonderful to see this. The, uh, cost of the trip for those people who really, this may be stretching their income, is there any grant service so that some of those could be a little bit lower fare? It's $5 you set for?
In some cases, some social service agencies or other organizations have, have created a billing system with Chris so that they could facilitate payment to the office, and we could provide the ride. But the actual rural transit system does not have a, an additional way to remedy that.
Okay, then, follow up to that. Are you finding, uh, any people who cannot afford, even though I, I acknowledge it is a low cost, but any people that you can't service because of not being able to pay the cost?
Yes, uh, and what's been interesting with all that is there is something called a Medicaid ride, and a lot of times, organizations like ours does provide Medicaid rides, and that's something that we've never engaged in because of the slow payments from the state, it becomes very difficult to wait for the money. And so, lo and behold, really just in the last few months, uh, Spur Student, which is the organization that contracts for the Medicaid ride, has developed a way to purchase tickets for us for people unmedicated, and what, for many years, has not been an option, is now suddenly an option for folks that go through the process to get the tickets purchased through Spur Student.
That's excellent to learn. And then my last question, since you are having what looks like, according to the data provided, so much success money through Friday, is it coming to the tipping point that you might be considering service on a limited basis on Saturday?
We would love to get to that point. I think what at the tipping point we're at is the tipping point of the state not paying us for what we're doing so far, so that really, unfortunately, hampers our ability to do the things that we really are funded to do. It really does restrain the, the ability to go as far as you're technically funded to do, but there just isn't the cash flow to do so.
Thank you very much.
And as Amy mentioned, other agencies do support, uh, the situations where somebody is unable to drive. We do that ourselves as well. On the quarterly report, which covers the first quarter of fiscal year 12, which is July through September, uh, there's a little bit more, uh, information in terms of the reasons people are utilizing transportation service. And as you can see, our medical need and employment, uh, are the two highest categories, which is something our agency's known for a long time, and we were only able to provide the medical and social service part of it. The mileage traveled seems to max out around 17,000, 18,000 miles. Um, you can see the ridership again on the second page, um, where the folks are coming from, and people can get picked up in Urbana, taken to Rantoul, and vice versa. At this point, with the number of vehicles and difficulty with state payments, I think we're kind of at capacity from what I understand. But hopeful that we can, uh, do something further down the road.
Mr. Chris?
I'm going to aim here tonight, I'm going to just fuel requests just like from 3:30 to 3:45, 3:50, and we don't know where the top end is going to be now with the second place in that international. How's that, you know, affect your bottom line when you have to put that much more than you can? I had to talk about some of those.
The finances, I'll leave it to you, Amy, to answer.
So far, we're doing okay, but we are being extremely cautious. The Transit Board does meet February the 9th, and we will be reviewing the ability to continue at full service. Right now, we're very hopeful we're going to maintain that. The good thing about Fuel is that Champagne Mass Transit, Champagne or Bana Mass Transit District has been extremely kind to Chris Rural Mass Transit. They've been a big brother to us, and they are allowing us to purchase fuels through them at cost. Yeah, and it's just fabulous.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Allen.
Amy, if you could stay up there, that's a financial question.
Yes, sir.
If, if someone was wanting to know, if they're listening tonight, or if they're watching this, where would someone go in the community if they wanted to see the financial side of this report? This is a members' report, riders' report, and quarterly. Where, where would one go to see those numbers?
Um, well, the, Iain's office has that, Regional Planning has that.
There's nothing posted on the website or anything.
Probably not.
Yeah, I, I have a follow-up too about the states, or default state that we live in. How far back are we talking about payments from the state?
We're, we're close to six months, and we're at 109,000 for this particular program.
109,000, so maybe there's going to be a little.
Yes, sir.
So I hope, I hope that the county won't be asking.
No, we, we, we will not be coming to the county for, for a bail out. We, um, take that response. The Chris Rural Mass Transit takes that on, and we do have a credit line that we're working with. Those bankers are getting a little stressed, so.
Especially in the state.
Yes, sir.
Other questions? Thank you again. This is Andy Cole, how do you see the case in file?
Second.
Move on, Mr. Jeff, second, Mr. Porter, all favor?
Aye.
Or both, on case? Mr. Cole, how do?
Okay, can we take another committee report until, now Cooper get here?
Charlie?
Charlie? Okay, halfway through, so take two, uh, committee heads, two items, uh, for presenting from the, uh, board. The first one is, is the monthly report, uh, for the county and township over fuel tax plan for December 2011. Okay, move back there, Hammond, and second by Kelly, there. Okay, something for discussion. Seeing, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone want to phone? And we'll go into the county engineers' report.
This is a petition from Kirk Township, uh, requesting, uh, help in doing some drainage job repair. Um, they meet the 210% value of the taxable property, and the complete, uh, value of the work done is 30,000, and they'll be paying about half that themselves, and this is a request for half of that amount.
Move approval? Second.
Has been, uh, moved to second, well, for discussion. Any, uh, all in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Anyone want to phone? Most who care. Okay. Got any other business? One. Three, nine, we're going to place, um, uh, seven B on the concern agenda. That's it?
Facilities this evening, um, we'll begin with fiscal plan of the report, and then your chance to view it. Would you like to make any comments later?
Yeah, well, I'd like to invite a committee that on page, uh, the, uh, expenditure report is not 100% complete for fiscal year 2011. Mr. Alastair standing, the tour is a few months, next month it should be complete.
Any, any motion to receive and place on file?
So moved.
Looked by Mr. Jay, second by Miss Cole, um, discussion. All those in favor, you can have those say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same, motion carries. Upstate Antioch, whatever, for construction projects.
Yes, uh, all of the, um, projects listed, of course, the building is finished, but all the, the lessons, permitting, uh, owner items, uh, maintenance area build out, fiber optic loop, are all complete with under budget, under what was budgeted. Generator backup system for the Brookings facility was, uh, study has been completed, so in essence, we have, um, excuse me, the, um, lighting and heating project, probably the south garage is completed, is, and the only item left on here that's, uh, not completed is the East Campus Storm Water Project.
I have a motion to receive and place on file, the report.
So moved.
Mr. James, second by Mr. Kurtz, discussion. All those in favor, you can have those say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same, motion carries. Now, over to the East Campus Storm Water Management, we have, uh, a little history sitting there with some of the documents, and then at your desk, there are some additional documents, one from, uh, the, and that has a piece from a board member, as was this. Coral colored sheet, um, I guess we're, uh, here, Mr. Burns here. It's open for discussion, Mr. Max.
May I ask Mr. Burns a, a question?
Amy, if we're going to do that, why don't we ask, uh, Mr. Burns to perform, so that everyone can share the information.
Good evening. Tom Burns and Chris Billig here from Burns Client Center Associates, and I'll be able to answer any questions you have.
Tom, uh, the design life of the, the alternative that you proposed using the aluminum steel pipe arch, what's the design life of that arch versus a concrete box, it's over? What would you ask him on?
Maybe Chris, I'm, I mean, they're both on the order of decades. The, uh, concrete box, you know, you have to consider the environments and stuff. The concrete box is probably easily 50, 80-year type life, uh, life expectancy. The aluminumized steel, uh, this will be generally completely underground enclosed, and that's probably going to be, again, on the order of maybe 50 years. We expect it would be maybe a little less than a half degree, uh, that's fairly, you know, fairly representative, but, uh, but you'll, going to the aluminumized steel instead of either aluminum or straight steel, um, extends that life 30, 30 long time.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like at this time to make a motion to, uh, adopt the Skarmseur approach, the gray approach, utilizing the, uh, aluminumized steel pipe arch. Second.
There's a motion from Mr. Maxwell, and second by Mr. James. I presume you were referring to the 380, 390,000 dollar, um, process approach?
That's correct, uh, that's listed as item one in this pink sheet.
I have a little bit of a concern there, and, um, and that is that we still could be pointing to doing this in February in terms of taking action. I, I think it meets all the meetings act in terms of this item being on there, but it didn't, it is not marked as an action item in the form of a motion, um, on the agenda, um... I, I am going to reluctantly avow a motion on the floor for people to discuss, uh, that, I have concerns, uh, Mr. Petrie.
Uh, my comment and question are to the chair in relationship to this motion being on the floor. Um, the information about the steel pipe arch is new information for us, and so I don't see how that comes under the meetings act, the visor.
I think that I'm not the county's attorney. I am your president, very good chairman for this, this meeting.
Doesn't matter.
Um, my, my own view is that there was a motion to defer several months ago, and I, my recollection, and I could be wrong, was that it was deferred for action in February.
That's correct. That's correct.
And I don't, I don't have the minutes in front of me to be able to say if it's February or not. If it's February, then I think the motion's out of order. If it is not February, I think there's sufficient notice, um, the item itself of consideration. In such a case, you, you could, you could again defer the motion that is before the body, you could defeat the motion, you could amend the motion. I think the, the most critical thing, I think, in this point is determine what we did two or three months ago in relationship to when this issue is going to come up for action. Mr. Alex.
I, I, my recollection is that, I believe that I'm the one who made the motion, and my recollection is that it was to defer till February, but I, I will attempt to confirm that in a minute, so with the chair, the bell.
That's what I'm trying to find out too, because if it's, if that's the case, then it's out of order. Mr. Langenhine?
I move to table the motion for the House till the month of February.
So, I think.
The motion table is not debatable. All those in favor of motion table signify by saying aye.
Wait, I have one more. The motion is not proper, then the motion table is not proper.
That's true.
Correct.
We can't debate a motion to table. All those in favor of tabling signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion's defeated. Table, while we're waiting to get an answer to our procedural question, why don't we talk about the substance? We can always rehash it next month. Mr. Wyble?
That's exactly what I want to say. We can, let's talk about it first, let's get somewhere with it.
Right.
Or learn about it, and then we can actually defer if we want to, or whatever.
First. Ms. Evans?
I'm, I'm interested in, and we have, uh, a few items actually on the desk tonight, but, uh, I haven't actually finished reading any of them. But I am interested in the differences of all of these that are presented in line with what the board wants. If the board wants a, um, a green approach, then I don't know which one of these actually fits that, or should we be looking for something that's a little more in our price range that is a green approach? And so I'm, I'm just kind of, uh, the committee process, this becomes more of a board, and when we start voting on things, we just stopped like two minutes ago.
Other questions? Uh, Mr. Cole?
I want you to have, you all try to work with Jeff Lewis so that, um, he could do some of the, um, excavating, um, projects to help cut down the cost, and also, uh, slate the cover.
Yes, specifically, we did talk to Jeff quite some time ago. He suggested for, as we did the approach, the analysis, that we used all contractor prices, assuming that the County Highway Department will not be involved. That way, both, you know, anything we do is on the same equal basis regardless of the number of alternatives. When it comes time to actually pursue the project, I think then there's probably another discussion they could have about, now is there an ability for the County Highway Department to actually do some of that themselves or not? But that, at the time, we talked about it quite some time ago, there was, he thought they would be busy this year, and so felt it was better for pricing, to price all of the alternatives the same way, just using contractor prices. And yes, the county, I would expect, they would have the ability to do that. I believe the short segment of a little over 100 feet of the box cover that was put in a number of years ago as a part of the fleet maintenance building project, I think the county forces put that, actually installed that in the ground themselves. I do think that they have the ability to do either the box, the concrete box, or the pipe arch, either way.
Okay, they had the ability, any equipment?
Yes, I don't know what they had to do as far as when they did the fleet maintenance project, you know, they could have had to rent a piece of equipment or something like that, but, you know, many contractors would have to do that, too, if there's something specialized, so I don't think that, you know, matters whether it's contractor approached, you know, pricing, or whether it's County Highway pricing.
Mr. Benson.
You probably have what I was just getting ready to say, but the October 4th minutes, it shows that it was deferred for three months, it would be January.
I'm going to rule a motion in order because, since the roll call, vote and amend the motion deferred for three months, carry with Alex, Andrew, the Brooks, and that, Carter, Paul, and Curd, and I'm in front of Connor, Richard, Chris, and Barry, Richard Schrader, and Wabu, and yes, to Evans, and Michael Jones, James, and Max, and Michael's motion, either, or else, I don't know, carry, that was after October 4, 2011, and that is for three months, and unless the calendar has changed, I'm wrong, would not be February, it would be January. So the motion is in order. Ms. Burson.
One concern, when you're talking about design life, when you're talking about design life, what happens if the EPA comes in and says this whole concrete and steel approach is not acceptable? And how much is it going to cost, when Urbana starts charging for our storm water? I think we ought to look at alternatives before we jump into this, that we probably have to undo, and if we're going to build a jail, then I think we ought to get a coordinated approach, instead of doing another piece, and another piece, and another piece.
Mr. Burns, is, first of all, any stormwater projects that are going on throughout the country, is there going to be an EPA inspection? Is that something that's normal in this field, after a project is completed?
Not normal, to my understanding, I was told, where a project will not have an EPA inspection process, to my knowledge.
Are you aware of stormwater projects that have been completed in the past five years, in which the EPA has come in and said, did all wrong, then we need to change to a green approach or a different approach?
Not to my knowledge.
I guess the other question I have, and I think is very rude question, Ms. Burson, is in relationship to the jail, is there potential that we would be adding a pot or something like that to the satellite jail up here in Brookings? How does approach one, two, three, or four integrate with that possibility, is it accounted for?
Not to my knowledge. The stormwater management plan previously prepared in its prior form for you folks anticipated the expansion of the satellite jail facility and its expansion to stormwater management, but that facility is already included, already planned and discharged to the stormwater detention facility that you folks built some years back, and it is not in the same sub watershed shed for which this current project is undertaken, and the prior stormwater management plan anticipated the expansion of the satellite jail, just like it's there, and some of the basins are already built.
Mr. Jay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have some concerns about delaying this any further. When we went through the process, the green plans, every one of the presenters said that the green plans would cost more, and they also would cost more to maintain, and then we get into this, we lose some of our ground, and we've got some utility concerns. It just seems like to me that with all the planning that we've done up to date, we could have had this done if we would just went ahead and bit the bullet and let the architects, engineers loose with it. I think it's imperative that we get it done. I think that, I do agree with our counterpart, I think there will be some law changes. That's why it's important that we get it done now, because we've already spent the money and the time and the effort to get this in place, and we could have it done before somebody writes a new stormwater management plan. And I quite frankly don't think that, and I'm not an attorney either, by the way, sir, but I don't think that that's going to affect what we do today, as long as what we do today is accurate.
Other questions or comments? Mr. Evans.
I have a question, I can't guarantee I won't have a later comment, but I have a question from Mr. Burns. An estimate for the total purgus area from the property, the reason I ask is, seeing an indication of Urbana's current thinking on the stormwater, on their stormwater fee, is about $5 per unit, and a unit is about 3,000 square feet of purgus area. Have you run into this Urbana stormwater fee proposal, or have you been involved in that, or have you had other clients that have done calculations with regard to that?
Yes, but I've not compared that with those for the county process. I've been involved because of my management with the village facility for Clinton, the facility, I can't even say, Clark Lindsay Village, I'm getting my tongue wrapped around that, we've identified that, and identified that cost, and part of their stormwater management facility will be anticipated by that process as well, just as the county's facility are included in that overall process.
So if I could follow up, have you, do you have any more information than what's presented from the last seven minutes of the stormwater committee, in terms of what the offsets or incentives might be for, for lack of a better word, green air solutions?
I've not seen a plan from the city to be updated.
I see, what I'm looking at now is a PowerPoint from that meeting, which is, sort of says about, you know, $490 to $515 per billion, and a billion unit is 3,118 square feet. I don't see a real sketch of putting numbers around any stormwater management incentives, or incentives for using practices other than the traditional sewage.
I've not seen any update from the city of Urbana.
Thank you.
Other questions? Evans, Mr. Weckler.
On the same topic, I talked to a guy a couple of months ago, he mentioned a figure something like $35,000 for the county for stormwater fee, but that's for all the property we own, so I can't really say, you know, what the effects of green practices out here, how we would have that. And again, he said nothing about what the price would be for green practices.
Other questions, comments?
I have a comment. I'll just speak twice here, but... I've been, you know, following this, and the reason that I initially actually made a motion to defer this for six months, which was amended down to three months, and my intention in making that motion to defer was to allow some of these statements to the effect that there are other potential vendors, there are, you know, individuals who feel that this can be done for a cost that is substantially less than the proposals that have been presented here by BCA. And I have to say, at this point, I've heard people say, oh yeah, sure, we can do this for a lot less, but I haven't yet seen anybody on forth and show how that can be done, make that in the form of a statement to the board, so I would like to, I guess, at this point, hear from anybody who still believes that this can be done substantially lower cost, and give us some general approaches to how that might be done, because otherwise I'm inclined to support proceeding to sending this to the full board's recommendation for approval.
My understanding, the way you would, it's my understanding that the way that you would do this is to talk to another of the people from the RFQ thing, the next guy down or something. I mean, they, you can't just ask them, say, we're going to deal with company A, but wouldn't you like to make a bid? This isn't a bidding, and it's an RFQ. So unless you go to another company on your list and say, okay, let's see what you can give us, I don't think we can do it. Isn't that correct?
You entered into a contract with Burns Clancy to provide the cost information that you have here as a result of the RFQ. If you want to pay another engineering firm to do the work that Burns Clancy has done, I suppose that may be an option, however, from a legal perspective, I'm not exactly sure where you stand with the RFQ process, to go to the next firm.
That's in the book. I thought it was what we told to the committee, that if they weren't happy with it, they could go to the next firm, who's actually higher rated and was more prepared to do a green thing.
I think that's a possibility, but you would be starting over.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Just a response to Astrid, I think, and Chris, you correctly, if I'm wrong, but I'm guessing that what Chris is saying is that he's heard other board members talk about that there must be ways to save, and yet there hasn't been any specific idea from individual board members on exactly how to make that happen.
Ms. Holyfield.
I do remember that several of us had made a comment that there was, you know, potentially another company, or maybe someone would step forward in a volunteer pro bono case, and I actually did speak with the department head at Parkland to see if there was some way that their classes would do a project pro bono for the county, and no one's interested at Parkland. They have been approached by so many people to do projects that they have a limited number that they can do, and mainly what the kind of projects that they do and involve themselves in are beautification and areas that we're looking to get into with these retention ponds, and they keep most of that work on the grounds at Parkland. So I have not been able to find anyone that would step forward to ease the burden of the cost to the county, so I think that, you know, and I did diligently do some research, and I don't know if anybody else did, but we did get turned down from Parkland College.
Daisy.
Okay, I have several comments. First of all, as to expectation by any board members, that some professional is going to come along and do drawings and estimates without any remuneration, I think is, I'm trying not to use the word that's in my mind, but a little lacking of consideration of people's professional abilities. I do know several people in the community who I consulted with to see if there are ways and means of doing a hybrid or a totally gray solution that would be lower cost than is presented on this coral sheet, and the indication is yes, but those people are not willing to come forward and just do this gratis, I've been told, and I meant to this at previous board meetings, that anywhere between $3,000 and $7,000 will get us some other information, so that we can have some comparison to make a final decision. That's number one. Number two, I did write up a memo as to approaches that we could possibly be taking. There's no, nobody's breathing down our throat to do this project yesterday. That was confirmed the last time we had this on our agenda by Mr. Reinhardt. We directly asked him that question. It does need to be done, no question about it, but Urbana is not going to find us, Urbana is not pushing us, and so this gives us some breathing room. Three, we have the potential of a jail design coming up, we have the beginnings of a comprehensive plan for the county campus that we set aside due to the problems that surfaced in building the nursing home. One of the initiatives that has been identified by the Strategic Planning Committee is that we develop a comprehensive plan for facilities and the county campus. It seems that we continue to put the cart before the horse, and what we do, we silo all of our decisions, and this is again, what is happening, and we'll do stormwater management, and then we'll do something else, and we'll do something else, and the Bartow Building that got placed in a spot that is, probably did not enhance the stormwater management issue at all, and instead of stepping back as a county board and looking at the best interest of the county, and looking at comprehensive plan for this campus, and then moving forward, which is what we should do, and that will not jeopardize us with Urbana, will not jeopardize us with what we may end up doing in approaches, and it will also give us time to see if there are grants out there, and it will also give us time to develop possible collaborations with some of the people at the university who do these projects, which will help us lower our cost. None of this has been pursued by the board.
Mr. Ezra.
Yes, I just made a few comments. I guess we've all heard the same, time is money. The farther this drags out, ultimately, if you ask me, the more it's going to cost, whether it's in more engineering fees from a different company, and/or if we even go with this plan, eventually more labor and cost, and more material cost. Second, to Patsy's points, we've already heard that basically the expansion of the jail's already included, so that's kind of a moot point. The strategic plan sounds to me like the number one or number two with the, either the box culvert or the steel arch, one of the two, granted the steel arch being cheaper, sounds to me like that's going to be the less maintenance, all in all, throughout the lifespan of the thing, so how is that not part of a better strategic plan for less money spent over the lifespan of it? Yet to me, time is money, and we need to do something with this and get it done. That's all I've got, thanks.
Mr. James.
Well, I guess when I hear all these comments about other vendors and people that come forward, I've been in the construction business, and I hear a lot of talk also, but my point is, I don't knock on anybody's door. If they want to knock on mine, you're more than welcome to give me any proposal you want, and take the time to do so. I mean, that's initial, and we started the process, and we look at it, and yes, time is money, I concur with that, but I do believe in looking at the issue and taking our time to do so, and when these things come up, I think we do a fairly good job, I do think sometimes it's rushed, but all this was put before us, and everybody had the same information I had, and we could ask all these questions then, but it's always in hindsight, we think that all of a sudden we've got this brainstorm, that this is going to be a better way. And I think that, you know, we're talking about water here. We're not talking about a piece of ground that we can't go back and do something to it, if we want to put lily ponds, or crabgrass, or whatever it is we want to put in there, but we need to get the situation with the drainage going, and we can sit here and beat it up and have 100 proposals in here, and we're all going to fight over it, but the bottom line is, something needs to be done. And like I said, if these folks that I keep hearing about, and yeah, I've heard some comments, too, from folks, bring us a proposal. Proposal doesn't cost anybody anything, and I think there was a committee that got together and reviewed whatever proposals there was, and the outfit that got the quote, or the proposal, apparently was deemed the best at the time, so why do we keep arguing about it?
Mr. Richards.
I think that this approach and this motion are sorely lacking. I think this particular gray approach is pretty much the lowest common denominator, the least amount of effort we could put in. However... However, I, and I am very much in favor of a green approach, but I, we are not hearing what we are supposed to do instead. We have not been brought alternatives that are not just simply cost prohibitive. I would really like to vote against this, but I would like to hear some specific action people who are for the green approach think that we can take tonight to move forward and do something with this.
Ms. Adams?
I just wanted to ask the other quick question. Once the RFQ is out, the person selected, they've done that portion of the RFQ meeting to give you some figures and designs, do you then have to go for a second phase in order to get to this part?
The intent of this RFQ is that this would take you, this would provide a contract for engineering services through the completion of this project. That was the intent of the RFQ when it was issued. The county board elected to take a staged approach by, after selecting the engineering firm, to ask that it first provide two design alternatives, because the county board wanted to see two options. So that was the first part of the contract that was executed with Bernice Clancy pursuant to the RFQ process. I've always assumed that the remainder of the project would be completed with the selected engineering firm as intended by the RFQ when it was issued, but there may be some issues with regard to that.
Can I just ask, in the RFQ, and I don't remember if what you described here, is that stated in the RFQ as part of, meaning I want you to do this part first, I want you to quote this?
No, the county board made those alterations to it at the point that it was being approved.
Okay, so, in this committee meeting, basically, of course, people can both have their own reward, but the process doesn't necessarily have to continue at this stage of the game if we've already fulfilled the first part of the RFQ?
You'd have to start over with another RFQ for the, whatever you determine is that you want.
But the RFQ that we initially did and fulfilled has been fulfilled according to what was issued initially?
No, I wouldn't say that, because the RFQ was for engineering, it was for engineering services for design of storm sewer extension for Champaign County East Campus.
Is that what we, that's what we had?
That was the RFQ.
Okay, but it doesn't necessarily say that if company B was not acceptable to the county board, that we could not go and file company A? That is not what the RFQ actually says.
Some of the RFQ actually says, but procedurally and legally, I mean, I would have-
I'm trying to see where that actually means, where that is, that we can't reject, once we do an RFQ, the county board can't reject what's being proposed by any company. Where would that be legally, that we could not reject?
You have, at this point, completed the first stage of the contract that was executed as a result of the RFQ, was $36,000 to provide two options, two alternatives. That's what the contract said. To continue on, if a decision is made tonight to go with the particular recommendation, additions to that contract need to be completed by the board to indicate that we're going through the entire project. The intent of the RFQ was always that you would select a firm for the entire project. The county board, in responding and when selecting this firm, decided to take a staged approach, because it did not know, you, the board, did not know which option you were going to adopt, which has an impact on the balance of the contract with the engineering services firm to complete the project for you.
And can you just direct me on our website where I could actually pull back up the RFQ? It's been a very long-
If you look at business contracts and agreements on the website, it will provide you with the link to all the contracts and RFPs and RFQs, and I believe it should be there. I think it's there.
Other questions?
Second.
Yeah, I'd like, I have one question, and I don't know if anybody in this room knows this, but if they have knowledge or insight or predictions with regard to how long this will Urbanis going to take with their process of coming to a stormer management fee, I'd like to hear it.
Mr. Bernice, do you have any other?
I have no expectation of another government body.
Ms. Burke?
Mr. Chair, wasn't there a motion to call the question?
Chair didn't recognize it.
Can I ask for a call if they're ruling on that?
The chair, the parliamentary, the chair must recognize the person, and I didn't. This person. That's parliamentary procedure.
In the RFQ manual that we were handed, it said that, you know, if you weren't pleased with the proposal from the first one, and you were allowed to ask a great deal more than we did about it, that you could go on to the second one. That was in the manual. And as a matter of fact, the committee, they did another, higher than this, was told that if they didn't like it, they could go on to the second company.
But you selected this firm and entered into a contract with them. That's in the process of going through the selection process. The selection process was completed when you selected this firm and entered into a contract with them.
Then you cannot go to the second company, as it says in the RFQ?
No, that's a legal question that I really can't answer. We would have to get a legal opinion on that. You can't really ask them to answer a question about this, Bob.
Is there any further questions, your name to the actual motion for? Mr. Adams?
Yeah, I apologize for people reading this. I actually don't, I think the call for quite a call, I would like to have seen the call for the question recognized, but I do think I need to say, I mean, one important argument was when Peter said, you know, we can't expect essentially, you know, stamped, signed, and engineer estimated plans for nothing, and I certainly agree with that. I mean, I'm the chair myself, and I would be reluctant to do work for nothing. What I was hoping to see in the period of this trial was not, you know, signed, stamped plans and engineer's estimate. I was hoping to see something along the lines of, you know, everybody else is suggesting a brick building, but we can do this with a wood building, or everyone else is saying you need a, you know, semi trailer, and we can do this with a pickup truck. I mean, I haven't seen, in the comments that we've gotten from the outside experts, I haven't seen game-changing comments that weren't essentially couched in, well, we think you should do the best management practices approach because it's what you should do, or it's what the EPA is going to want you to do eventually, or it's going to save you money on stormwater fee, but I haven't seen what I, what I, I haven't seen any evidence of a fundamentally different game-changing approach, as would be suggested by the statement that one of the other potential vendors said they could do this for, you know, half their costs. So, I just haven't seen evidence of that. And I guess one more comment for the county administrator. There certainly do appear to be based on our discussions in caucus over the last several meetings that dealt with this, there seems to be a disconnect between what members of the vendor selection committee and members of the board felt they had available as options if they were not satisfied with the approach that Bernice Clancy provided. And I can't know who is right or who is wrong here in terms of who told who what, but I am concerned that we got into a situation where I think people are making decisions based on a misinterpretation or misunderstanding of what our options were to board members. So, I would hope that in future similar situations, board members ask more questions, and the county administrator is more forthcoming in terms of deciding or explaining exactly what our options are, because I do think there are members of the board who felt that we were, had more flexibility in this process than we now are told that we have.
Mr. Benson?
I'd like to call the question and request a roll call.
We'll have a roll call.
Second.
I already said we're going to have a roll call.
Well, I mean, the-
Is everyone ready for the roll to be called? Yes, as to adopt the $39,000 storm sewer approach with steel pipe arch. Does everyone understand we're voting on that and go then to full board?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, to clarify, it is to recommend to the full board.
That's correct, then it will go to the full board. Call the roll. Yes.
Burksen?
No.
Betts?
Yes.
Esri?
Yes.
Holderfield?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kurtz?
No.
Langenhine?
No.
Maxwell?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Michaels?
Yes.
O'Connor?
Yes.
Petrie?
No.
Quizzenberry?
Yes.
Rosales?
Yes.
Schrader?
Yes.
Wyholm?
No.
Alex?
Yes.
Ammons?
No.
Anderson?
No.
I'm sorry, Richards?
No.
And Rosales. Oh, I got you.
Oh, you forgot me.
I'm sorry. Carmen Coward?
No.
Motion carries. That's that. We argue within two weeks. Back up as you like, Mr. Kurtz.
Thank you. Chair. Good evening. Page 9, open with annual renewal of recreation and trade licenses. Number one for Curtis Rogers Limited, 3902 South Duncan Road, Champaign, 1112 and 123112. When I saw move, I'm sorry, I can't move anymore. I like moving. Okay, we'll give it to Mr. Betts to move a second. Mr. Schroeder, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Number two, Gordyville, L C 2205, CR 300 North Gifford, 1112 through 123112. Mr. Esri, I am a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number three, Lake of the Woods Bar and Liquor, 204 South Prairie View Road, Mohammed, 1112 through 123112. Mr. Maxwell, Ms. Holyfield, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number four, Tiddicup, R I D Park Incorporated, 1750 East Tiddicup Road, Mohammed, 1112 through 123112. Let's hold a field, Mr. J, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next, B, direction zoning administrator regarding proposed zoning ordinance text amended certain wind farm standard conditions. Go to page 75, please. We'll note a memo explaining our process for changing the wind farm ordinance and improvements that were identified during public hearing of our first wind farm. Just quickly, I will read it so that you understand where we're going here. The county board approved the California Ridge Wind Farm Case 6966, special 11, in resolution number 7966 of 1711. The case, the first ever use of wind farm zoning requirements and several needed improvements were identified during the public hearing of that case. Any change to the zoning ordinance requirement for wind farms must be adopted for the next wind farm application in order for the changes to apply to that application. It has been rumored that the next application for a wind farm special use permit may be received in February next month. If the committee agrees with the proposed amendments and authorizes the zoning case to proceed, the public hearing will begin February 2012. Any amendment should be returned to the committee as early as March with adoption at the full board in April. All right, like, hey, we're going to have a discussion on this. Let me come up, a motion to open that discussion on-
All right, there's no motion is needed.
No motion is needed, okay. Carol, Scotty?
I just want to ask why we changed seven and eight, change from reclamation agreement to a simple requirement for-
Okay, we have the state's attorneys here, who's going to answer that question.
Our previous ordinance required reclamation agreement between the developer and the county, that is a technique used in other counties, and I'm comfortable justifying that, but it is an unusual technique, an unlawful law, and I think it's a more straightforward application of the zoning statute, to simply have what we were asking for as part of, assuming it be part of the conditions of special use. In addition, by making these terms, conditions of special use, if the developer doesn't like those terms, they're forced to seek a variance, which is a much more stringent process. It basically forces the developer to justify deviations from what we want for their, does that make sense?
Just to connect this, I want to know, in the reclamation agreement, if they submit a plan instead of an agreement, what keeps them from changing that plan as far as cost and things that might come in the future?
The terms of the reclamation plan would still be conditions of the special use permit. They would still have to comply with the terms of the reclamation plan, or else it'd be in violation of the special use permit.
And this puts a more stringent process in place than the previous statement?
Right, the way it was previously stated, there was a reclamation plan that our office was involved in negotiating with the developer. This actually requires them to give us what we want or seek a variance at the front end, and the variance process is a lot more stringent than negotiating with me.
Mr. Brown? So, to restate that another way, it sounds like-
That's fine.
I'm sorry. At least I have my own reads. So, what you're saying is essentially that before, this was handled by what was essentially a side agreement between the developer and the county, and in this case, we're proposing to make it actually integrate with the special use permit.
Right, that side agreement was ultimately adopted as conditions of the special use, but this just makes it more directly a condition of the special use.
And you believe that makes it more enforceable if whatever does come to that?
Yes, I believe it does.
Thank you. Mr. Roybald?
Mr. Hall, I have several comments, questions. We're looking at page 77 of our agenda. Top paragraph, you talk about documentation compliance is required to receive a zoning compliance certificate. I'm just, and then on page 78, minimum page, you talk about the permanent urgent submission of the toll plan. There, you have to be submitted and accepted prior to approval. The question is, is that the way you want, once prior to approval, once prior to accepting, to receive the certificate? Is that the way you want it different, or is it, shouldn't it be accepted?
These, the proposal here in item one on 77 and item six on 78, this is exactly what we're doing at the current wind farm. It worked, I believe it will work for that wind farm, I believe it would work to change the ordinance that way permanently.
Okay, I just, I just know the difference of wording, I just want to know if that's the way you want it, that's fine, that's it. On page 77, again, the second paragraph, you have, "All agrees shall be executed prior to the close of the public hearing before the board." I think you should make it clear, is that a county board meeting or ZVA meeting?
This is in the zoning ordinance, and the zoning ordinance defines board as zoning board of appeals.
Okay, so that, that just don't exist for that. Okay, I'll find that for you. Going on to, let's see, I put my notes on the first, from the original copy, so I have to move around here. When we're talking about the removal of the foundation concrete at a minimum of 54 inches, I'm not sure where that is in the agenda.
That would be on page 80.
That's on page 80, no?
Under subparagraph five, or H.
The question is, if a landlord has an agreement with the wind farm, in the process of setting up the-
Our previous ordinance for part of reclamation agreement between the developer and the county, that is a technique used in other counties, and I'm comfortable justifying that, but it is an unusual technique in our law, and I think it's a more straightforward application of the zoning statute simply have what we were asking for as part of the agreement be part of the conditions of special use. In addition, by making these terms conditions of special use, if the developer doesn't like those terms, they're forced to seek a variance, which is a much more stringent process. It basically forces the developer to justify deviations from what we want. Does that make sense?
Just to connect this part of what you're saying.
Sure, go ahead.
In the reclamation agreement, if they submit a plan instead of an agreement, what keeps them from changing that plan as far as cost and things that might come in the future?
The terms of the reclamation plan would still be conditions of the special use permit. They would still have to comply with the terms of reclamation time, or else it'd be in violation of the special use permit.
And this puts a more stringent process in place than the previous statements?
Right. The way it was previously stated, there was a reclamation plan that our office was involved in negotiating with the developer. This actually requires them to give us what we want or seek a variance at the front end. And the variance process is a lot more stringent than negotiating with me.
Mr. Allen? So, Mr. Segal, to restate that another way, it sounds like a word you're... I'm sorry, Mr. Segal.
That's fine.
I'm sorry. At least I didn't blame his reads. So what you're saying is essentially that before this was handled by what was essentially a side agreement between the developer and the county, and in this case, we're proposing to make it, actually integrate it with the special use permit.
Right. The side agreement was ultimately adopted as conditions of the special use, but this just makes it more directly a condition of the special use.
And you believe that makes it more enforceable with whatever does come of that?
Yes, I believe that.
Thank you. Mr. Wibbels?
Mr. Hall, I have several comments, questions. We're looking at page 77 of our agenda. Top paragraph, you talk about documentation compliance must be submitted prior to receiving a zone compliance certificate. And then on page 78, middle of the page, you talk about the permitting ordinance implementation of the whole plan. There it has to be submitted and accepted prior to approval. The question is, is that the way you want it, once prior to approval, once prior to accepting, to receive the certificate? Is that the way you want it different, or is it, shouldn't it be accepted?
These, the proposal here in item one on 77 and item six on 78, this is exactly what we're doing at the current wind farm. It work, I believe it will work for that wind farm. I believe it would work to change the ordinance that way permanently.
Okay, I just, I just know the difference in wording, I just want to know if that's the way you want it, that's fine, happy with that. On page 77, again, the second paragraph, you have, hey, they're, all agreements shall be executed prior to the close of a public hearing before the board. I think we should make it clear, is that a county board meeting or ZVA meeting?
This is in the zoning ordinance, and the zoning ordinance defines board as zoning board of appeals.
Okay, so that, that just don't exist for that. Okay, I'll find that one. Going on to, let's see, I took my notes on the first, from the original copy, so I have to move around here. But we're talking about the removal of the foundation concrete at a minimum of 54 inches. I'm not sure where that is in the agenda.
That would be on page 80.
That's on page 80 now?
Under subparagraph five, or H.
The question is, if the landlord has an agreement with the wind farm, in the process of setting up their big heavy structure, could they have it to a lower, could they have it at, say, 72 inches if they wanted to?
I guess they could, the county would not enforce that.
Right, but I mean certainly the landlord could do that.
I would assume so.
Okay. The other question is about average salvage price. Again, that moved around, but I know it's in there somewhere, oh, it's on page 82, second paragraph. I think we need to have a definition of what average salvage price is, because is that average salvage price at Danville, Mervis, or is it here in Champaign, or is it in Chicago or St. Louis? Or is it, you know, we're getting from, what we get from the companies is sort of national price. I mean, is there any way we can come up with a better definition of that?
I'd be happy to try.
The reason is I ask because obviously, you know, the average salvage price from Chicago will be different down here because you have to transport it somewhere. Or, i.e., where would the metal go from Champaign, where, what smells would it go, would it go to Chicago, or St. Louis, you know?
We asked those very questions of the engineer for the last wind farm. Now, again, this estimate is to be done by a licensed professional Illinois engineer using their judgment. I don't think that you can, can match that judgment if you write an ordinance trying to set it down in the simple text. So the question is, we would, we would remove less flexibility by having a more defined requirement in the ordinance. That could well end up making the process, in effect, cost more if this ever has to happen. Frankly, I think you're better off getting the best opinion of a reputable engineer and then accepting it or not. But we can certainly try to nail that down.
I guess they perhaps, you know, put it just in some way, that takes into account the transportation costs of delivering the metal to the, to the salvage site, or to wherever it takes it.
And again, in the last wind farm, we were, we asked that question, we were told that that number was in the estimate.
Okay.
Now, given the nature of that estimate-
Well, I would like to correct, could we ask maybe what that cost is? Maybe define what the transportation cost is, so we have an idea of what the actual salvage value of metal only is. Is that possible, is it? Well, how's this could you think about it?
I actually don't, we could include a list of items here that have to be considered in every case. I really frankly think that's the best we can do.
Okay, all right. I'll go with your opinion on that. Let me see if I have anything else. Yeah, this is a... And again, I look at my old notes, you have a statement about any wind farm program is allowed derelict for a period of six months. Do we have a definition of derelict?
That is not defined, no.
That's not defined. Perhaps you can come up with a definition of that?
I'll refer that to the attorney.
I note that in paragraph D, we already-
What page is that?
I'm sorry, page 83, A-7, last series of subparaphracts. In D, we already referred to a wind turbine turbine that appears in its data disrepair or imminent collapse and/or creates imminent risk.
Okay, all right.
So that provides some specific guidance. I think derelict in E, in subparagraph E was intended to be more general because we can't predict every possible way a wind farm could, could cause a problem.
Okay, all right, thank you. And finally, there's nothing, we have nothing here about recommissioning. I don't think this needs to be done that way, but I think down the road, there will be possibly going to have to use the same towers, putting in a new pod, a new sized generator, and then you'd have to apply for a new permit. You know, it's possible that they may change nothing but, say, the generating power of the other unit, or they may make other changes. I think that we have to make a decision, you know, like recharge the full amount for, for getting that permit or not. You know, and perhaps the, and also if you put a new pod in there, is that going to change the height of the tower off the ground, which may have some effect on noise or flicker? So I think we need to think about how we're going to handle recommission. Again, I don't think that's going to be a problem for some years, but it's something we need to, need to work on down the line.
Yeah, any, the ordinance is pretty clear to me. Anything that is bigger or puts out a higher capacity or changes a physical dimension to, it's actually bigger, triggers them for a new special use permit, and it's a full fee.
So the question is, I mean, do we really want to charge the full fee, I guess is the question for that, because-
Or even higher.
Well, we do that, maybe.
Might even higher.
Because it could be that they're just, you know, just walking on a generator, it's exactly, nothing's changed, it's the same size pod, so on and so forth.
If it's the same size and no higher-
No, I'm talking about the physical size is the same, but the generating power is different.
Yeah, that would be quite a difference.
It's 1.6, it's 1.7.
Whatever, whatever. So I think that, you know, we have to decide, okay, if you're just making a simple internal swap, do we want to charge them a full fee amount?
Would this committee like to give direction?
That would be the change, we should charge them. It should be done. I think if it changes, it ought to be charged.
Well, the question is, we're going to charge them a full amount.
Yeah, we're going to charge them 4500.
Yes, this is totally different than what they had before. You get a new license, you get charged the full amount for the whole new license or something.
The reason I bring this up, because I think it was Mr. Schroeder initially asked that we have a fee that covers our costs for, like, that, you know, that gives us our pay. That makes sure that whatever we charge will cover the cost for our staff to do all this. Of course, we want to make money on it, that's fine and dandy, but I think that's something that we might want to consider.
Well, there's two issues here. There's the issue of the special use permit and the issue of the zoning use permit once that's approved. You are not recovering all your costs on the special use permit. You're covering your costs on the zoning use permit. You're not losing money on wind farms overall, once they go through the permitting process. But I know that we spent more than $20,000 reviewing this wind farm in August, September, October, and November.
Chris, did you have something? Yeah, to the main, to the main discussion. Go ahead. Okay. Diane, your question's completed.
Yes, sir.
I did not get this reading the first time, but I think Mr. Wibbels' comments made me wonder whether the issue with salvage value isn't the lack of definition of the phrase salvage value. And I'm wondering if perhaps a definition to clarify the salvage value is, you know, net of transportation, disassembling costs and so forth, would, if that would clarify that. I mean, this question about, you know, how much, how much will they give you per ton in Chicago versus St. Louis? I mean, I think what matters is how much they get after they've paid the disassembly and all the thing. And I don't know if we have a definition, if there's a legal definition of salvage value or if that's, if there's any ambiguity there, it seems like it would be corrected with a definition.
I'm not aware of a statutory definition of salvage value. It's something we can define in the ordinance. It's what the engineer, what the engineers come up with.
I guess the point is, if our intent is to say, the dollars that they're going to get back after having disassembled and hauled, which I, which I think is the, is the intent, right? It's not the price per ton, it's the price per ton that they get. Whether they sell it to somebody who comes in and does the disassembly themselves and charges it for it, or whether they pay the cost of disassembly and then scrap, the end result should be the same, right? It's the amount of net of the cost required to get that, turn that into salvageable material.
Also, also note that we dropped it to 70%.
I know that. I'm just trying to address Mr. Wibbels' question about-
We typed it out because we wanted to get a few more bucks up front for the decommission.
About how do we ensure that the engineer is giving us the number that we think the engineer is giving us, and a definition could, could help clarify that. I'm not willing to raise the level, make an amendment to this, but I think if that's something that the zoning industry feels would help, then I encourage us to look at it. Good point. Okay, thank you, Bill. Any other? Patsy?
Yes, I have a number of items, and I'd also sent a number of items to Mr. Hall when he asked the board members to respond to Mr. Wibbels' question about clarity as to which board is being referred to. I mentioned to Mr. Hall previously that one of our, I thought one of our goals on anything that we, any documents that we approve should have some user friendliness to the citizens of the county. And if, in reading documents, they have to go back to something else to find out what board is this, and definitions, I do think that could be ameliorated just by putting in which board you refer to, and some of the definitions I requested be added to this so that it's, definitions that are specific to this ordinance, not general zoning definition. So it's much easier for the general public to read and understand. I do have two items, I don't know if they are amendments or just to put on the table here from our legal counsel as to the propriety of these, and if there is, and if we could develop them into the, this improvement of the wind ordinance. The first has to do with the removal of 54 inches of concrete. I don't see anything in the wind ordinance that has any stipulation as to what is used to fill that hole. And what I'm referring to is the type of soil. Illinois law and strip mining, when our recommission is done, has specific requirements that the site is supposed to be returned to what the site was when the project began. And I'd like to see some wording such as that in the wind ordinance. And the other, which Mr. Hall and I discussed, I'm looking at it on page 91, it's D, number one, and it reads, at least once every three years for the first 12 years of financial sur- assurance, and at least once every two years thereafter. I'm very concerned about the second half of that, and I had asked that that be every year. And the reasoning behind my request is, we have no idea down the line who will own these wind turbines. None of us will be around on the board. Mr. Hall probably will no longer be the zoning administrator, so there's a lot of history that will not be in existence, and I think it's to the benefit of the county to have a report every year. And Mr. Hall countered that this would take too much time. I countered back that I don't think so. Once this is set up in a matrix for the company to do this, it's easy to plug in new numbers, and it should not be difficult to do. Thank you very much.
Mr. Wibbels? Response to any of those?
I think that those are some policy questions. I don't see legal problems with addressing both those concerns in the ordinance, whether it's costing or if you want to do that, and I can, if you do, I can work with Mr. Hall on language, but like I said, I don't see a legal problem with it.
Mr. Jay?
Response to Patsy's item about referring to whichever board it is, I deal with legal documents, construction documents, and if the public wants to read them, they can have at them because it's over my head sometimes. But Mr. Hall did state that there's a list of definitions, much like when I started this county board, I didn't know what E-Luck was until someone told me, and thank goodness we don't spout that all the time and I have to read all that. I think it's fine, the people that are looking at these documents know what they're looking at, they're, you know, up to date on what they need to be, and as far as the general public, I have yet to find any of my friends that sit around and talk to me about reading all this and wanting to know what board we're talking about.
Mr. Maxwell?
Man, a question on, and perhaps, John, you could-
Use your microphone, please, Mr. Maxwell.
Perhaps, John, you could explain to me, on page 80-
What page?
Page 80.
80.
At the bottom of the page, it says shall, with my, it says shall be 210%. And then on, on page 85, there's an item that says shall be 150%. Explain to me the, are they the same thing, or is this a different item?
Can I, you might find one of them if we could, but- The requirements, it's on page, I believe it's 85, 150%, those are requirements applicable to all non-adaptable structures, which could be a wind farm or it could be a roller coaster for amusement park. But you'll see on page 85, there's an exception there for requirements specifically set forth at 6.1, 0.4P. That, that means that the, once specific to wind farms, the 210% trumps that for wind farm.
Any other discussions? Comments? Okay. Do you want to move to the direction? Where are we on this now? At this point, I'd like to get a motion from the floor to accept these changes for the wind farm ordinance order.
We're just giving direction to Mr. Hall to make these changes.
Okay.
We have to have the changes back to us before we can actually discuss the both of them. So we're just giving direction to Mr. Hall. Mr. Hall, have you gotten direction? Except me, for me, I confused you, sorry about that.
Well, I've sort of gotten multiple directions, but I'm shocked. I'm ready to proceed if this committee has finished commenting on this.
Okay. All right, thank you. Let's move on. Monthly reports, you have your monthly reports on your desk concerning the December report and summary for fiscal year 2011. Are there any comments or questions on those reports? I'll make a motion to replace or apply. Mr. Jay, second, Mr. Rosales. Any discussion on the reports? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. No other business? Okay, if you have nothing on, you can send agenda. And Fias?
We have one item left. There is a general location proclamation, wrong with this, should be on the policy agenda, but because of the calendars, we'll be down. That's second by Mr. Richardson, a discussion reasoned that the annual event is Friday, all welcome to come here, it's the fourth policy. Discussion on this proclamation. Now, if you'd like, seeing that all favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Let's hear it. Seeing that, we're adjourned.